Okay, alright, call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock, 6pm on November 16th. It's a virtual meeting, not at the Brick Meetings House. Just before we actually move to adopt it, everybody does know that we are meeting for budget virtually at 9:00 in the morning on Thursday, is that correct?
Oh, 9:00, I thought it was 10:00, is it 9:00?
Well, I asked Bill to send everybody to see if they wanted to change it to 9:00 and I think John and I don't think you, Stan-
Well, I don't remember seeing that.
Is that okay?
You guys are gonna just be doing your selectmen's budget on the highway on that one day, right?
Well, we did, I mean, we kinda did the first pass on the highway, so I guess we're selectmen's and then we'll have a third meeting probably sometime after Thanksgiving to finalize everything.
Okay, cuz that morning, I believe, I'm meeting with Jeff Nugent to do the mapping for the stump dump.
Alright.
So I won't be there at that one.
Kim, are you there?
I am, I'm here.
Is that okay if we do the selectmen's budget and then we do it after Thanksgiving to finalize everything, can you live with that?
Yeah, yeah, that'll be fine.
Perfect. Okay, motion to adopt the agenda, please?
There is just one change, we gotta do the minutes of November 12th.
Yeah, we have to, we have to, that was just added on, those minutes just came in. Do you wanna do those today?
Yeah.
Has everybody had a chance to read them?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll amend the, so, need a, to, motion to adopt the agenda as amended to include the meeting, the minutes of the 12th.
Shouldn't there be another amendment or correction to show that it was not at the meeting house, that it was virtual, I mean, we've talked about it, it just, that's not what it shows on the writing.
Well, I did-
I've already corrected it.
Did open the meeting saying that it was virtual, but do you wanna-
I've already corrected the agenda.
Okay.
Alright, a motion to adopt, please?
I'm ready to adopt the agenda as amended.
Second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Okay, alright, so we have the minutes of November 2nd, so a motion, I mean, do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes of November 2nd?
There's a couple of typos.
Okay, go ahead Kathy.
On number, on 7, where it says Rich Thompson, it has M.A.S., I think it should just be A.F. Add?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
And then on the second page, you have the letter-
The number.
For zero, letter O, but you have a number for second on 8. The section, budget.
Oh, I see, yeah, right.
I don't know where you are.
Mis- misspelling.
Where?
Number 8.
Number 8, Bill. Uh, third line down.
Yeah, the second budget should be F.
Yeah.
E.O.N.
Yeah, I got it.
Number.
Oh, there's a, there's a much bigger one.
Okay.
Um, under attendees have Danny Taylor listed as a health officer.
Where? 10 what?
No, I, I changed that already, yeah, I got that.
Well, it's not what it shows on mine.
I know, I cha- I caught it today and I changed it.
Okay.
But thank you, yeah, I got it.
Any other additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, a motion to approve the minutes of November 2nd?
Don't move.
Alan, Alan says made the motion second?
I got-
John, okay, all in favor of approving the minutes as amended, say aye?
Aye.
Both? How about the sec- the 12th?
I've got, uh, I've got a couple of changes under-
Whoever just came on, shut your mic off.
Go ahead Stan.
Uh, under highway, pretty much all the way, about halfway through the paragraph where it starts with passive requires that a person contracted to fill out our crew who uses our equipment, and use our equipment is in there twice.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, and then under town administrator, um, if ill, on the second sentence, if ill, that cannot be done, there are two persons, uh, maybe people. Person should maybe be people who could be called upon, or two persons.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not sure you wanna do that. And then I think under 3, um, I think the meeting actually ended around 11:00, it's listed as noon, I thought it was like 11:00.
11:00, 11:00 o'clock, meeting ended at 11:00 because Stan, you had to go, had it at 11:00.
Yeah. No, the meeting ended at 12:05.
No, 11:05.
No, 11:00.
I think it was 11:00.
11:00.
And then the other correction should be 11:05, not 12:05.
Yeah, 11:05.
The section, budget.
Oh, I see, yeah, right.
I don't know where you are.
Mis- misspelling.
Where?
Number 8.
Number 8, Bill. Uh, third line down.
Yeah, the second budget should be F.
Yeah.
E.O.N.
Yeah, I got it.
Number.
Oh, there's a, there's a much bigger one.
Okay.
Um, under attendees have Danny Taylor listed as a health officer.
Where? 10 what?
No, I, I changed that already, yeah, I got that.
Well, it's not what it shows on mine.
I know, I cha- I caught it today and I changed it.
Okay.
But thank you, yeah, I got it.
Any other additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, a motion to approve the minutes of November 2nd?
Don't move.
Alan, Alan says made the motion second?
I got-
John, okay, all in favor of approving the minutes as amended, say aye?
Aye.
Both? How about the sec- the 12th?
I've got, uh, I've got a couple of changes under-
Whoever just came on, shut your mic off.
Go ahead Stan.
Uh, under highway, pretty much all the way, about halfway through the paragraph where it starts with passive requires that a person contracted to fill out our crew who uses our equipment, and use our equipment is in there twice.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, and then under town administrator, um, if ill, on the second sentence, if ill, that cannot be done, there are two persons, uh, maybe people. Person should maybe be people who could be called upon, or two persons.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not sure you wanna do that. And then I think under 3, um, I think the meeting actually ended around 11:00, it's listed as noon, I thought it was like 11:00.
11:00, 11:00 o'clock, meeting ended at 11:00 because Stan, you had to go, had it at 11:00.
No, the meeting ended at 12:05.
No, 11:05.
No, 11:00.
I think it was 11:00.
11:00.
And then the other correction should be 11:05, not 12:05.
Yeah, 11:05.
So you guys only met for an hour?
No, we, we started early because the, the first part of the meeting only lasted 45 minutes. And, um, we went through the highway budget and Stan said he had to leave, and so we, we adjourned the meeting, but the meeting continued with some subcommittees meeting, discussing with, uh, with John and, um-
Okay.
Whatever. Are there any other additions or corrections?
I have a couple minor ones.
Go ahead.
Suzanne Welch, uh,
Welch.
Is capitalized in, in attendees. Attendees.
Oh, attendees, okay.
And then, under highway, declaring an, uh, emergency, even National Guard could be called on and from Danny Taylor, I think should be called on, period. The and should be gone, the comma should be gone, have a capital indicating you're starting a sentence from Danny Taylor.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Anybody else, any other additions or corrections? If not, a motion to amend meeting, the minutes of November 12th, um, as amended, say, make a motion, please?
Motion for as amended.
Alan makes the motion second?
Second.
Kathy, okay, all in favor of the minutes as amended, say aye?
Aye.
Both? Okay. Um, the warrants, I know we all signed them today, uh, I was the last to sign, I gave them over to Kim, so that's, that's done. And Kathy, are you gonna open up the bids, or who's opening these bids up?
Yeah, I have one.
And I don't see any other, let me go check the mailbox. Is Tim Morton on the call?
Uh, I don't see him on here Danny.
He's right here.
Oh, well, here he is, hi Tim.
Hi, oh, so I was just setting a light off.
Bill is checking to see if another bid did come in.
Okay, you want the name of the bidder?
Hang on one minute, let's wait, wait the bill gets back Kathy, and then we'll, we'll start.
Protocol Kathy, that we use is that you would name the sale, that you're opening a bid for the following sale, uh, and then you would state, I have a bid of X dollars submitted by X company.
Okay.
I checked to make sure they were at the showing.
We only have one bid, huh?
It's not surprising. I don't see any others, and, and I wasn't given any today.
Okay, alright Kathy, go ahead.
Um, I have a total bid submitted of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. And-
From?
From Logan Sears, S.E.A.R.S., the last name.
Of Longview Forestry.
Right.
They were, they were at the bid, the bid showing, they were invited to the bid, they are longstanding operators in good standing with us, we use them for timber sales and for vegetative management contracts. It exceeds the minimum bid.
Usually, Tim, um, the procedure that on bids is we, we don't accept them, um, we open them up and then we let people review them, uh, you should review the contracts or whatever, and then we'll, at a subsequent meeting, we'll accept the bid, is that how you wanna proceed, everybody? Alan?
Um, it's a little unique that we only have one bid, and it meets the requirements, but it probably would be prudent to let Tim review it and make sure everything is in order. I trust that it is, but might be good procedure.
Can I just, can I just add, I just, I just gave you the total, let's specify each category with prices, I didn't read those.
Yeah, it's not necessary at this point, um, we will use those if we draft a contract. I'm happy to review it, I think if someone can scan it to me, um, then I will respond to, I guess I would respond to Alan, is that right?
Well, either Alan, Bill, either one, if it's okay, then we'll, we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting, which is December 2nd.
Okay.
And then, um, if, if it's okay with you, Tim, let Alan and Bill know, and then, um, then we'll just accept the bid and then you can go from there.
Uh, once, once you've, assuming you accept it, um, once you do, we can pro- do all the processing of contract and checks and that, so we sort of-
That's great.
Do the administrative stuff and then send that on to Bill.
Rather, rather you do that, I think you have more experience with it, so, at least the point feels differently.
Easily for us, so.
Okay.
Um, my always suggestion is, um, it might be good to make contact with Longview and, and make them aware of what happened, what's going on, and it's, you know, assuming everything is good, that we are going to accept it, um, rather than waiting two or three weeks, at least they know they have it, and perhaps that's the difference of whether it gets on the schedule for this winter or not.
Yeah, I can send them, we have a standard form I can fill out, that would say they're the apparent high bidder awaiting from the select board.
Exactly.
Okay, is everybody on board with that procedure?
Yep.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
That number? Yes?
I would like you guys to make a motion that all the administration of the contracts be handled by Tim Morton, and that he notify Longview of that they, what he just said, that they're, they are the apparent winner, I want, I'd rather have that a motion than just everybody agree to it.
Okay.
Please.
I make that, I make the motion that we be authorized, Tim, to be the administrator and ask him to contact Longview that they are the apparent high bidder.
Do we have a second to that?
I'll second.
Uh, Stan, okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Both? Okay, Tim, it's in your hands.
Yeah, I just have one last question, Kathy, can you read that total lump sum bid to me number again?
Fifteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four.
Zero, zero?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, great, thanks folks, I'll keep you posted.
Alright, thank you. I will forward to him, and Bill, Bill will get that over to you as soon as he get it from Kathy.
Yeah, thanks Tim.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Uh, while Tim is on the phone, I would just like to make a follow-up comment for you. Um, you'll recall that in a previous select board meeting, uh, Tim volunteered to take a group of us out on a hike through the, uh, village park to show us the logging project, and on October 15th, we did that with five participants, and it was a, a, a really important and, and meaningful experience for all of us, um, Tim explained the decision process and all the variables that go into it, and, uh, the group of us came away with a feeling that, and not just a feeling, but also, uh, an understanding that the benefits of this project far outweigh any negatives that, uh, one might have thought of, so we just, I just wanted to say thank you to Tim for taking the time and the effort, uh, to show us the project, and just let him know that the outcome was very, and, and let the select board know also that the outcome was very positive, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and I had my trusty sidekick Alan with me.
Alrighty, well, thank you for your comments too, and thank you, uh, Tim, and it's in your hands, so we'll move on, okay? Have a good night. Okay, Danny, highway? Um, I guess, do you have anything before we get into, um, the, what, the discussion?
No.
Um, Danny, I got one thing, how's the pruning of the trees from the firehouse up through, has that been started?
It's gonna happen this week.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, would, we, we discussed at the budget meeting about the, um, plan of implementation, uh, how do you wanna handle this?
Well, I don't think we have anything to, to discuss here, uh, other than what's in the minutes, uh, because we haven't met yet, and, but it was on there, just to make that go forward if we had anything.
Okay. So if this-
But, but, but there might be comment on that, but I, I some, I summarized what we did in the, in the minutes, so.
Well, I, I think that the meeting of the contractors should be done right away, it shouldn't be put off.
Well, uh, I've, I've constructed Bill to, to, uh, to set it all up, so hopefully it can happen this week.
John, is it your intent to meet with them collectively or individually?
I have nothing to do with it, I'm not on that, it was Danny, Joe, and Bill.
It was gonna meet collectively, Alan.
And that would be a virtual meeting or a personal meeting?
Well, I don't know, visually, we were gonna have it as a personal meeting, but I don't know whether we're permitted to do that or not.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
I don't know.
I was under understanding, Bill was just gonna check with the four local contractors and see if they were interested.
Right.
Check out the whole, how the insurance stuff is gonna work, and then we're gonna meet with them after we figured that part out, that's what I, how I thought of it.
Yeah, that's, Bill was supposed to contact them this week, and then go-
That's what I remember.
Yeah, right, okay.
That's what I remember too.
Yes, okay, so we'll, I'll, I'll make sure that that happens and then we'll take it from there, and see how we wanna make the meeting. Anything else Danny?
No.
Okay, does anybody else have anything for Danny? Okay, if not, we shall move on, Kim, are you here? Kim?
Okay, I, I'm here.
Oh, okay, you're on, you're up for next, you have anything you wanna discuss?
Nope, taxes are being paid on stack of them to enter tomorrow, um, not much, working on the budget, getting ready for Thursday. Um, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm getting a little nervous about having my office open, um, there's a tremendous amount of traffic going in and out of my office, um, it's, it's making me feel uncomfortable, I can't speak for my listers, but I know they've, they're putting in a lot of time because of the reappraisal, and I can't imagine that they're not feeling uncomfortable also, I'm trying to update and get all of our land records online so that I can, um, have that offered for my researchers, so I am contemplating locking the doors for appointments only, um, and I'm gonna, um, pursue that maybe a little further this week and talk with Bill.
Hey, Kim, what type of traffic are you getting?
Uh, it, well, when tax payments are due, people rather than are putting, rather than putting them in the slot in the door, they'd rather come in and hand them to me, which means a sign-in and me taking them, um, they don't have their, their amount, um, just every, just everyday type of stuff, so, and I just assume people call and ask me those questions and just use the Dropbox. So, it's a busy time of the year.
Well, I, I guess, Kim, um, is that something that, you make that decision as the town clerk?
Yeah, yeah, it is.
So I guess, if, if, if you and, and Bill and the listeners feel uncomfortable, I certainly don't have any, any issue of, of you going back to what we used to do before.
Okay.
I mean, that's just my feeling.
Okay.
I'd agree with that, I would agree with that, you, you're the safety person for the office, Kim, so I'd say that's your authority.
Oh, there is, go ahead.
But I was gonna say, we did find out today that, uh, Kim and Bill are not essential employees.
Yeah, Bill, I, I showed him the email because a lot of, um, the clerks on the MuniNet have been talking about whether we're considered essential or not, and what guidance do we have, and we did get a little verbiage from, um, I think it's Ted Brady, and I shared it with Bill, that if it's at all possible to remotely work, um, unless you feel it's a necessity to come in, um, in my case, to put in taxes and all that is kind of a necessity, and that's where we're at right now, it's tax day today.
I, I personally feel that we, in, in the first lockdown, we declared that you were and Bill were essential, and we did that, and I, unless somebody else has a different, I, I have the same feeling, so that's just my two cents.
And, and I feel comfortable working there as long as there's not a lot of traffic because we are so isolated, we have so few that do work within the office, that I feel comfortable just with the small group we have, but then when you start getting people just flowing in for various reasons, that kinda makes me a little uneasy, so.
Well-
On another subject, I wanted to let you know too, that, um, my vault door, um, I think I had someone come in and take a look at it for my combination. And there is an issue with it, and he really didn't wanna touch it, he's just a locksmith, um, I have to contact Debo, who, um, takes care of Mosler safes, and it is not going to be an easy project, it is going to be quite expensive, I've not yet contacted the company to find out exactly what they mean by not, by being expensive, this is coming from, um, the lock repair, I will pursue that after everything simmers down here, um, right now, it's just not being used, because if I use it and then I can't unlock it, cuz it's sticking, uh, we're in real big trouble, so, so just so you know, that's on the back burner for a project.
Hey Kim, one thought, if you're gonna lock up, would it make sense, and maybe you've already done it, have your number and the phone number and, and, uh, Bill's phone number posted on the door if they come in, they have a question, they can call you on their cell phones?
I, I think it is, or it was in the very beginning, and I'll check-
Yeah, it's still up.
Yeah, it's probably still up, and it's on the website.
I just figured somebody walking in, you know, just to find out what their taxes were or something.
And while we're on the subject, even though it's, it, it doesn't really pretend it's on the agenda, but it is with Kim, do we still wanna have all five select person go in and sign the warrants, is that, is that still okay, we haven't, we weren't able to do that before, but right now, it's still on a voluntary, so is-
Well, that, I think that was mostly up to you guys, how you felt about it, um-
No, the office was closed, you remember, so we decided not to do that, so.
That, that's up to you guys, I don't have much to do.
I don't have a problem going in and signing them, but-
I don't have a, um, I do it on Sunday or Monday morning where anybody's even there.
So that's, so we'll leave it at that so far, that we just continue to sign? Is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
Yes.
Alright.
Can I comment?
Sure.
On the, um, two positions not being essential?
Sure.
Um, if you remember, when this came around the first time, uh, the select board declared that the road crew was essential, um, and that seemed to resolve that question whether they could continue to work or not, um, i- if we wanted, and if Kim would like us to, uh, could we also declare that they are essential, even though the state says they're not, it seems like the town could say, well, in our case, we feel they are essential, and that lets them off the hook, and we could say essential, but they'll work in a locked office or closed office, the office will not be open to the public, uh, in the traditional method.
Didn't we do that before?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we already did that.
I'm just asking if we should do it again, just to make it clear, that's all. I don't know.
Well, it still, it still stays in effect unless we change it, so I think it's, I think, unless somebody wants to change it, I think it's, it's there from the last time.
But did we determine last time that Bill and Kim were essential, or did we only declare the road crew was essential, that's my point, if it was only the road crew that we determined- the road crew was essential? That's my point. If it was only the road crew that we determined essential, should we include Bill and Kim?
I believe all, I believe Bill, Kim and the road crew included as essential. I think that's what we decided. But I could be wrong.
Why don't we just redo it right now and then it'll be done with-
Make a motion. Somebody make a motion. Kathy, go ahead.
I make a motion that, um, the road crew and Kim record and Bill Kearns be essential workers to the Grafton Town.
Second.
Second.
Okay. So Alan seconded Kathy made the motion. Any further discussions? If not, all in favor of Kathy's motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. All right, good. Kim, you have anything else?
No. I don't have anything else.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yep.
And you let us know how you wanna proceed going forward.
Oh, yeah. I'll keep you updated.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um, all right, um, Dave, uh, we received the, uh, planning commission. So all we need to do now is pick a date, I do believe.
That's correct.
So do you have any dates in mind?
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. You're jumping ahead. Number seven has to do with the member. You jumped ahead to eight.
Okay. Uh, we do have one member, uh, who, um, who has expressed interest. I, um, get his name, it's, uh-
Ben Jones.
Ben Jones, yeah. Uh, do you, does, how does the select board like to proceed? Would you like to have him come into the next? We, we invited, Bill and I invited him to come to this meeting just to listen. And he had a prior, uh, meeting with Google. Um, would you like to have him come to this December 2nd meeting so we could kind of ask him some questions? How would you like to proceed?
Can't the, uh, planning commission just interview him and then put up the, uh, just the recommendation to the board?
They, they recommended to the board. The, yes.
They've already made the recommendation. I attended the meeting where they interviewed him virtually. And I participated in that meeting. I heard the discussion. I had a chance to ask him questions. Um, they've are, they are already recommending him to us.
And I, I was at that board meeting too.
That's correct.
So how do you wanna proceed? Do you wanna vote tonight on this? Or do you want to have him come in and vote at the next meeting? So we can all kinda meet him?
Well, I look at it this way. There is no other candidate. We have no reason to reject him. And, and it's not like we're deciding between this person or that person, which then I would say, yes, we should have an interview. I, I would make a motion that we rec, we follow the planning commission's recommendation.
I'll second it.
Any, any discussion? Further discussion? If not, um, a motion to, uh, um, accept, um-
I made that motion.
Yeah, I mean, uh, we need to have a vote. So all in favor of Alan's motion to accept the candidate?
No, no, you're not gonna accept him. You're going to appoint him to the planning commission.
Appoint him to the planning commission.
Well, we are accepting the recommendation to appoint that, what the planning commission-
No, no. No, no, no. No, no, no.
No, we-
They recommend you appoint by law.
The motion is we need to appoint him. We, we do appoint. The planning commission made their recommendation, select board, we are the person to make the appointment.
Yes. Correct.
So the meeting, the motion needs to say, we will appoint him to the-
That's, I recommend. I recommend that we appoint uh, Ben a- as-
Make a motion.
I make a motion that we follow the recommendation from the planning commission.
And appoint.
No, no.
No.
No, no, please. All you gotta do is appoint. You're going to appoint.
Not the recommendation.
You can make the recommendation, you accept them and you appoint. If you wanna put it that way, fine. But you gotta appoint.
We have to appoint.
Let's appoint him.
Okay. All right. All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
And who was the second, please?
Um.
Stan.
Stan.
Okay, thank you.
All righty. All right, so Dave, you're all set with him then. You proceed, all right? Okay? All right, the next one is, um, the town plan. We need to, um, I guess we need to form, do we, Bill, do we need to formally accept it?
Yeah. I would make a motion that you, that you, that you have received the town plan and, and uh, amendments and the report and you are formally receiving them.
Okay, so who wants to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Who seconds that?
Second. I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion that Bill has read, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Now, the next order of business, we need to have a date for our public hearing.
Joe. Well, uh, can you go back to when Kathy made the motion about who's essential? Cause I think you better add Michelle Dolph.
I didn't understand it.
Um, Danny, Danny, Danny wants to add Michelle Dolph to the, um, essential workers, um, other than Kim.
Yes. Yeah, if we want people to get paid, that's a good point.
Okay. So, uh, doesn't have, anybody have an objection just adding her name to that?
No.
Oh, definitely.
Then we'll do that. Okay, thank you, Danny.
Yeah.
Okay, so Dave, we need to set a date. Uh, Bill, uh, what's the regulation? When do we, what date do we need to have this public hearing?
You, you have to, it, it has to be more than thirty days and, and less than a hundred and twenty from the date you received it. You received it on the eleventh. However, we've got to advertise it and you have to advertise it for fifteen days. So my recommendation is that you have the public hearing right before the town meeting. Uh, right before the, uh, the select board meeting on the twenty first. So you have it prior to that and then you may take, take action on it, uh, after. What you're, the action is to send it to the town meeting to, to, uh, we should probably have a formal, uh, Kim and I can work on, um, the article, but, uh, uh, the article that you're gonna approve to be pu- put on the town meeting so that we have that all done. And it goes to town meeting for an Australian bound.
So what you're saying is that you wanna, you wanna set the, uh, the select board be on the twenty first of December?
Correct. No, that's for hearings.
Hear, the hear.
Hear, a hearing followed by a meeting.
Well, the meet, there's your regular meeting and then, uh, at your regular meeting, you will have, uh, a chance to make the motion after the hearing.
Right, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Everybody okay with that date?
Yep.
Yep.
Make that motion as described by Bill.
Okay, second?
Second.
All righty. All in favor of having the, um, the public hearing, the select board's public hearing on the twenty first of December, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's done. Uh, do you have anything else, Dave? Your microphone's off. Your microphone's off. They can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
Can't hear you, Dave.
It's on now. I, I don't know why you can't hear.
Smoke signals or something? All right, well, since Dave does can't speak, we'll move on. Um, did he come on? No. I guess, uh-
I don't know what's, I don't know what's going here, on here. I'm, I'm, for several people, I'm getting a text type message that doesn't make any sense. I don't know. I have no idea what it is.
All righty, so-
Phone is off. Oh, no, it's, it just went away.
I still have it.
Yeah.
No, he's still there and his microphone is on according to my screen.
Well, we can't hear him, so, okay, Dave. All right, the next item is the school. Is Jack Dryer around?
He was. He was.
What happened to Jack?
He was just there.
Here he comes.
Oh, he's here. Your mic's off, Jack.
Jack?
Hi, sorry. I'm in, I'm literally in two meetings tonight because I'm also participating in the statewide uh, discussion about, uh, waiting studies. So my apologies. Um, I'm, yes, so we're at the school section, I guess. The, um, the thing that I wanted to communicate with folks is that, uh, as you know, uh, any one of the three towns can petition to withdraw from the, from the unified school district. And because, uh, Westminster is physically so separate from the rest of the district and because they were willing to pay for it, uh, we thought that if they wanted to go first, uh, we'd welcome that. And they apparently have, uh, to the best of our knowledge, uh, we had a report from Cheryl Charles, uh, at our meeting saying that the, uh, the town of Westminster did receive a petition at their last meeting. And they approved that petition of withdrawal and have scheduled a a meeting of the town or a vote of the town to withdraw, um, on December fifteenth. Now, I have not got confirmation of that from Russ and, uh, it sounds like Bill got nothing from Russ except maybe the opposite information. But it is our understanding, um, at least as best as we know, that there is an ongoing vote. Assuming that takes place, uh, as scheduled, um, the next step would be for the board of the, of the school to schedule a meeting or schedule a vote together with the two towns, Grafton and Athens, to accept that withdrawal. And then they would go, then if we did that, it would have to be within, I guess, forty days of the December fifteenth, um, of the December fifteenth, uh, approval by Westminster. Uh, I, and if that takes place, then we would schedule a, uh, a special meeting, uh, a special vote. At this point, considering we can't meet, a special vote of the two towns to, to vote it up or down. At that point, uh, Westminster would go to the State Board of Education and see what happens. As you all know, um, this is new territory for the, um, for the state board. Uh, the Department of Education has not taken a position on whether or not, uh, Westminster can legally withdraw. It seems that they can. But we will be the first town to have been, or be the first district to have been consolidated by the SPE to, uh, have a town petition to withdraw. The, uh, language of the statute seems to imply that they can do so. But, um, we'll see what happens when it goes to the SPE. And, uh, depending on what they do, then we may come to Athens and Grafton and say, well, we had now have a precedent. And we can, um, go forward with separating the two towns if you all would like. So that's kinda where we're at. Um, as I say, to the best of our knowledge, they scheduled vote on fifteenth December by Westminster and we'll see what happens.
Jack, I got an email this morning and this afternoon, late this afternoon, that said that Westminster did approve it, but they wanna send it to the attorneys.
Well, that could be. That was not, we did not have that information, uh, as of Thursday. So that may be something that Russ wants to do, or maybe that's something the chair wanted to do. And that may, uh, that may delay it. But the, uh, vote apparently by the select board at the time was, uh, was for the fifteenth. And if they're gonna do it later, well, they'll do it later. My, my view is the only thing that's a go-no-go for us is when Westminster gets around to having a vote, that, uh, when Westminster gets around to having a vote, uh, we would, the clock would start for bringing it to you and to our, uh, to the, um, school board, uh, at which point they would have to have a, uh, a vote of approval. And the, the advice we had was that it would probably be best if those were, uh, joint meetings of the board and of the towns. So, um, I will keep you informed that once I've got hard information. Bill's shaking his head, so clearly he's got different information than I've got.
Well, no, that's not the way it works at all.
All right.
First, first of all, it goes to the Secretary of State who certifies the vote from Westminster and then informs Grafton and Athens that they have to have a vote and they have to have a vote on the same day. And then Grafton and Athens have a vote on that same day. And those results are then sent to the Secretary of State. And so, uh-
I didn't mean to, to take the Secretary of State out of the equation. I, I, I believe that's a formal, that's largely a formality based on the discussion I had with Secretary of State's office. Um, didn't seem like, and they don't have discretion on this. It's mer- merely reporting out.
Okay. And, and so that's one thing. The other thing I have to tell you is that Russ was, Russ Hawkins, the town manager, town of Westminster, last Thursday was very frustrated because he wants to see this thing go forward. He had not heard from them at all. They were supposed to be back at the November tenth meeting with, with those things that the select board told them on October twenty eighth that they needed. No one showed up and he has not heard from them. So if that meeting, if, if that vote is set for December fifteenth, Russ doesn't know about it.
Well, that's just marvelous. Uh, I know Jessica Westcart is on the, uh, is on this call and she heard the same stuff I heard. Jessica, uh, are we, did we, did I miss hear? Or is that what you heard as well?
I actually, um, saw an email and I don't remember who it was from, that yes, the petition was received, um, by the select board and accepted by the select board, but they did send it to the town attorney.
Yeah.
Uh, and I don't know if they can, I don't know what the, um, warning required for that meeting is. I don't know if they can do a December fifteenth vote or not.
Yeah.
Uh, because there is special COVID guidelines regarding votes now.
Yeah, there's that.
And I, I don't know what the, um, I don't know what the interval with the special guidelines, if it's still thirty days or if it's less.
Jessica, that's the email that, that I, I got, I received to this about five forty-five today.
Okay.
That Westminster had approved it, but they didn't want it to send it to the attorneys. Now, I don't know that, if that delays it or not, I don't know. So can anybody verify that and let, let the Bill and the select board know what, what really happened?
I will talk to Larry Slayson. He's, uh, been our, our, uh, district attorney and he's also the Westminster town attorney. And I did leave him a note and didn't see anything back, but, um, I, I'll, I'll check on it tomorrow.
I spoke to Larry about something unrelated a couple weeks ago. And he was heading to hunting camp and said he would basically be out of communication till, till December first. I don't know, I don't know if that was specifically regarding his day job or his, uh, evening activities with the school board. But, yeah, he did say he was basically gonna be gone till December first. Um, so somebody might wanna check on that, maybe with his partner.
Yeah, I can talk to his partner.
And then I think, um, the, the other thing we tried to mention in the school board meeting is that this withdrawal action, especially due to our sort of precarious situation, we are not the favored children of the State Board of Education here in Grafton. Um, this really has to be a, a town-led effort and the school board has to stay fairly hands-off. Um, Jack, you know, getting information like Jack's doing back and forth with various groups is fine. But as a school board, the board- the board, I don't know that we can make a recommendation in one way or the other. Um, because we don't want to taint the process with the State Board of Education. Um, but we're sort of treading carefully. We can provide information, but as a board, we can't provide you a recommendation.
We, we have had, we have, our position before the SBE on this matter is going to be that we have acted in good faith to implement the consolidation. And we have in fact done that. We've tried all sorts of ways to consolidate administration. We tried to consolidate uh principles. We tried to consolidate some of the art programs. We took a look at all these things and we actually get pushed back from the administration saying it really wasn't physically possible. And we'd like our, we'd like to be able to state before the SBE when we get called before to say we are not sabotaging the consolidation. We have acted in good faith, it just simply doesn't work. And the individual towns have had the good sense enough to realize that and they're making a petition and we uh don't oppose it. And that's, you know, that's important, we think, because uh we were accused of not being enthusiastic enough uh consolidating Grafton and Athens uh initially by the SBE and Westminster effectively was a uh was a side casualty of that uh of that annoyance with us uh that we were slow opting in, at least they thought we were. Uh, so, so from our perspective, uh it's important that the advisory committees or the select boards themselves uh receive a petition, citizen petitions, make a determination and then and then act on it. And that was our understanding of what Westminster is doing. Though it does sound like there's some timeline issues that we need to tidy up, among other things. Um, I have to say that uh the consulting with attorney thing is a little bit funny because uh Larry was the guy who worded the petition in the first place. So I have a little problem seeing how he's gonna have any discomfort uh with his own uh with his own wording, but uh we'll have to find out what the deal is there.
Well, that may be the town attorney, I don't think that is very sleazy.
Wasn't, Larry was the town attorney, but it's not that long ago.
Okay.
So that's why, that's why it's just a little bit of a head scratcher for me.
All right, so, so can can we, can you guys, can you just verify all this and and get back to us and let?
I will get back to you this week with a with a written note uh confirming the particulars.
Okay, and then then if we need to do anything, then we shall do something. Kathy, you have something to say?
I have a question. I have a question about the um school advisory committee. What are they doing and are they gonna organize a meeting to get information for the public?
Right, thank you Kathy, that's a very important question. I think that uh we had assumed that each town would would essentially act as a Title IX uh committee equivalent. Uh, that's, the Title IX is what we did when um when uh we initially looked at uh the whole issue of consult voluntary consolidation. Um, we had encouraged uh David Major and the members of the Westminster folks to reach out and meet with their uh with the Athens and Grafton uh advisory boards. And they seem to have just decided to kind of go and do it on their own. Um, so because of that, what I've said I will do is call formal meetings of the uh two advisory boards together uh at a point that's convenient in the next thirty days and have them look at the particularly the financial stuff, because I think that's really important for everyone to know the extent to which this is a uh a move that will benefit or negatively impact uh Athens and Grafton. You know, we lost our two hundred thousand dollar small schools grant. I want to know if we're gonna get it back, if uh we're back on our own. Uh, because if we're not, that's gonna, that may not work out very well for us. These are the types of things we need to know and just generally have a sense as to uh where we stand uh financially. I think that's the biggest part of it, Kathy, I, you know, there may be other issues y'all want to talk to.
I think you, I think they also asked to um set up some kind of protocols for this committee to follow.
Yep, uh, the uh, the other item is going to be governance, because when we remove two members of the uh of the uh Westminster uh board, uh do we want to change the governance of the uh of the uh Rump district, you know, are we gonna, are we gonna work with a four-person board? I'd I'd kind of like us to have uh more members uh no matter what we do, because I think it's uh, it gets tough if somebody's sick.
Oh, yeah, I, can I speak for a second?
Go with Jessa.
Um, to Kathy's point, what I think should happen is that Grafton should call a meeting of the school advisory committee and very much advertise it so it's a public meeting and people can get information there. And ahead of time, I think the town should query the so, the school board for numbers, um a lot of the financial information, get the tax information from Kim, um whatever other information you would like to get regarding enrollment, test scores, what have you. Because when this all settles out, Westminster, if the petition is approved by Westminster, leave, Grafton is then going to have to decide if we want to remain in a merged district operating a joint elementary school with Athens or if we want to look at some other model. And even if we decide to keep this a model, Jack is right, we are going to have to modify the articles of agreement um that were an issue, we had that meeting at the high school because of things like number of board members and terms and all those things will still have to be settled out. And that's something the the school advisory committee can really do. And there's also, if we elect to remove ourselves as well from the joint venture, then we will need a new school board from the town. And the school advisory committee will be in a great spot for a temporary appointment or something.
Right. The uh, the important thing to to mention here is these advisory committees are the select board. And they are called uh and populated the pleasure of the select boards. Uh, we can, we are basically, again, this is a hands-off situation. We can provide them with information, we can help you with uh if what we think would be a best practice to organize yourselves, but it is your, is your committee. We have taken the initial step of working with Ora Pagon, who is the new finance director. And as part of budget prep uh coming up this coming month, we are going to have uh budget numbers for the district uh as a three-town district. As two districts, one of Westminster, one of Athens and Grafton and one of the three towns separate with some uh some at least swag-level tax data. Uh, and that we'll, we anticipate being able to provide to you, that's, that's the piece we can do. Uh, and and a piece you can't do, so we'll get you that. But uh and we, we can be helpful in terms of sort of the governance issues and tell you what, how we're organized and what recommendations are. But it's still, it would ultimately be your decision.
Jessica? Are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, see, this was, this is what we, on the agenda today for our point is shall the select board ask the school advisory committee to study the pros and cons of the withdrawal? And this is what I believe we we want to do.
Yes.
And and your comment, Jessica, that uh that the uh advisory committee should get together and start this is right on the mark.
Okay, yes, I agree. The answer to that question should be yes, the school advisory committee should do that.
Be very happy about that.
So what what we'll do now is that uh hopefully the, we'll try to get a motion uh from the board tonight here to get the advisory committee from Grafton to start doing their homework.
All right.
Yeah, and I would um schedule, I would schedule their meeting for as soon as you can and ahead of time query the school board as to the district financials for the last two years. At a minimum, and whatever other information you think you might want.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, you guys are going to have to excuse me, because as I said, this waiting study has a potential impact of maybe as much as twenty percent on uh on uh the education tax for our area. And I wanted to probably stay attached to that meeting. I'm kind of running two meetings simultaneously, so if Justin knows everything I know, I probably can sit briefly than I can, so I'm gonna.
No.
Okay, thank you, Jack. All right, so our board, does somebody want to make a motion that we ask the advisory committee to start the investigation process?
Uh, first, can I ask a question of Jessa?
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, Jessa, if if we were to ask our um advisory committee to meet, would you be willing to meet with them and bring them up to speed?
Yes. Yes, I would.
Okay.
Um.
Seems like that would be much more efficient.
Yes, um, but I would also like included essentially like an agenda item, if you could mail it out to the existing school board saying the advisory committee is gonna meet on such date, please provide the budget information and the financials for the last two years. And then we can get that sort of delivered in a format. We can email it to everybody, give it to you to put up a call every like.
That sounds good. All right, so, somebody want to make a motion that we um provide, that we ask the uh advisory committee uh to set a date and to meet with uh, to meet with Jessica to start the process?
Jess, Jessa was suggesting that we set the date.
Well, how can we set the date if we don't have the committee with us? I was hoping that um one of the committee members, um Hardy Merrill was gonna be on tonight, but he's not.
Hardy's on, I've been listening.
Sorry.
I've been listening.
So Hardy, do you have any dates in mind?
Uh, no, I don't. You know, the advisory committee, the three of us, I don't, I'm not even sure who the uh the third one is. I know that Chris is on it, I believe, and myself, and I don't know who else is on it. Um, I think we need to know exactly what we're supposed to be doing. And uh we don't know that, I don't know that. And I'm starting to hear something from Jessica, because finance is sort of, you know, where I would like to be. So, but uh, we need, we need some direction here, I think.
I think um the agenda item, you can probably get away with one agenda item for our meeting, which is to discuss um and this sounds rash, but I think it's the best way to put it, to discuss the withdrawal from the Union Elementary District.
And what information would be needed?
Um.
You're saying make that part of the agenda?
Yeah.
He means to make that part of the agenda.
We need an education, I think, is what I'm saying.
Yes, but I think for agenda items, you can just put um to discuss withdrawal from the Union Elementary District. And therefore, ahead of time, it's okay to do it through email to ask the school board for um the last years of budgets and tax information. I think that's a good place to start.
I would say uh that's true. I would agree with that.
Okay, so how do we get it, how, Hardy, how do you want to do this? Get this meeting going with the, with the three of you and with Jessica so that the process can get started?
Who's the third member?
I'll have to look that up, I, I'm not gonna do it right now, I could, but.
I think it's Pamela Spurlock.
I think that's right.
Okay, so what?
She, that's right.
If we get the information tomorrow, I will call the other two members and see when it would be a good, appropriate time that they could meet, that we could all meet, and uh we can go from there. But I guess what they're asking for is a motion to get us moving here and uh what information that the school board is gonna provide us.
Uh, it's Rachel Plummer, sorry about that, it's not Pamela Spurlock. Although she, she volunteers to serve, but the third member is Rachel Plummer.
Good, yeah, that's true.
Okay, so, so Hardy, can we give you, can can the select board give you a motion to start the process? And then you, uh with the other members? And uh Jessica will either through her or your request to her, get all the necessary information?
Yep. Yes.
I make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
I need somebody to restate the motion. The motion is for Hardy to call a meeting of the school advisory committee and to work with Jessa to collect the information they need to proceed.
Okay. Okay, is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
If there's no further discussion, I want to favor say aye.
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 Okay, Hardy, and if you need help, you know, with Bill, whatever, we're here to help you.
Yes. I'll be in tomorrow.
All righty. Thank you, Jess.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys, and let me know when the meeting is scheduled and anything they want, we can get.
Thank you, I appreciate it, have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you, Jess.
Uh, other business, is there any other business?
I have some.
Go ahead.
Um, our minutes that we just approved of the second, in those minutes, we, we talk about having to um meet with the road crew and do performance evaluations in in order to set uh budget uh uh um wages, the wages of the employees. But unless something has changed, evaluations do not reflect uh their pay or or they don't, they don't get a pay raise based on the merit of their evaluation. So the select board itself could actually say uh based on everything that's going on, we're going to do cost of living for our employees and and we can still have evaluations and talk about things that need to improve, things that are very good. The two are not currently tied together.
So. That's, but we, we had the personnel committee, Alan, have, we're supposed to be meeting on Thursday. And uh it's our recommendation, what we want to do, that we will bring back to the board, as I understand it. And whether you, you, we want to make a recommendation that they get merit increases besides or no, that's up to the, us to do that and let the board decide.
Okay.
Any other business?
Yep, I have another one. Also on our um on our minutes that we just accepted under item eleven, other business, it states that uh Rich and Stan will have something on the agenda for guidelines. Um, that, that's been promised for a while, it hasn't happened. Everybody's aware of what's happened with COVID in the last few days. I suggest that we ask the emergency management director to write something that is appropriate and get some guidelines in place. And it can be a simple statement that just says, Towne Grafton will follow the guidelines of ACCD.
That's been sent the bill. That was sent November 2nd through email, through an attachment, Towne Grafton COVID-19 policy dated November 2nd, 2020. I have it, but that was sent, I never heard anything back, so I'm assuming it meant all protocols.
I think it's a really good policy. You know, we've been real kind of busy. You know, trying to set up the meeting and doing all this other stuff. So no, I haven't gotten to. We had a holiday in between. And I'm already getting complaints that I work overtime, so yeah, I'll get it done. Thank you.
But Alan, that has, that has done.
Actually, actually Stan has it done. Stan and Rich did it and it's all done.
Okay, well.
We'll put it on the next agenda and we'll get it adopted.
I'm just saying, it said it was going to be on this meeting and it wasn't, so I'd just like to see it.
Okay, just remember.
When I send out the agenda, you could raise that issue. When I send out the agenda, Al, that's why I send out the agenda and ask people if they want something on there.
Right, and this, we asked the select board if they want to put anything on the agenda and so in the future, if there's something that I missed or Bill misses, let us know. We have no problem putting it on the agenda. Any other business?
This is Hardy.
Yeah?
Again. We had scheduled a capital budget meeting for tomorrow night. And I had six people at the time who were going to attend, you know, in person upstairs in the town hall. Well, that's obviously dead now.
Right.
Bill sent out an email today to the members to see if we would be able to get a Microsoft Teams meeting going. And we've only had two people that have responded. John is one of them and Kim, who can't vote, is the other one. And Joe Valenti did respond that he could be there. I don't know what a quorum is or whether we can meet still virtually or whether we have to cancel the meeting and try to go with it at a future date. So I just wanted to update you on that situation. And Danny still owes me some information.
Well, I think you got to have the information from Danny before we can continue anyways.
So you want me to cancel the meeting for tomorrow?
I was told I'll have the meeting. I was told I was going to have the information from the salesman by tomorrow. That's all I got from them.
Well, I guess my point is we don't have a lot of the team available here for the meeting tomorrow, so I'm wondering whether it should be canceled or not.
Well, that's really up to.
What the requirements are for the meeting. Do we need a quorum or can we have whatever, whoever shows up hold the meeting?
This is an advisory committee only, and so you don't have to have a quorum. And whatever you can do to get the capital budget committee together to make recommendations, the more, the more you can get, the better. I haven't, as, you know, I had people hit reply all, as Hardy has already reported. We've only heard back from from four of them on email. Joan Lake did call me, Hardy, and said that she could not do it that way, so.
And I know Linda Robertson has her surgery tomorrow on her cataracts, so she's probably out. And I never heard from one person who was on the committee who would not, didn't return a phone call or anything about the meeting in the first place.
Arch probably can't make it.
Yeah. And he hasn't responded at all.
Well Hardy, I guess since you're not a, you don't need a quorum, make a decision with your, with the members who can and maybe you should go forward with the meeting or change the date.
I'm happy to go forward with it if I can.
I don't see why you can't.
Okay. So Bill, will you set that up tomorrow for four o'clock?
Four o'clock, yep.
Hardy, I think you got to get ahold of Danny and find out if he's got the information for you, for the meeting. We can't do anything at the meeting.
Yeah, Danny needs the information. If he doesn't have the time, then postpone it.
What do you think, Danny?
I'll see if I have the information from him tomorrow. I called them both. They said I'd have it. I won't know until tomorrow.
Well Danny, why don't you, why don't you and Hardy meet tomorrow and if you don't have the information, then you guys can cancel the meeting. I mean, you can't have a meeting if you don't have the information.
I won't have the information unless the salesman's calling me back, so.
But you'll know that tomorrow sometime.
Yes.
What time? We're supposed to meet at four o'clock, so I would say maybe we want to cancel this thing.
Yeah, I don't know what time they'll get back to me, if they even will.
Well Hardy, one of, you know, actually.
You only have three people, you only have four people to notify, including yourself, Hardy, so if he doesn't get the information, then you call the meeting.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay. And you know, if you, if you need to reschedule it, let Bill know and he'll set up the team meeting.
Yep.
Yep.
Are there any other business? Public comment? It's not? Okay. The next day of the meeting, of our regular meeting is December 7th. And as the agenda said, it's not at the Brick Mountain Meeting House. It will be on Microsoft Team Live. Okay? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In the discussion, all in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, just as a reminder, we have the Microsoft Team Budget Meeting on, at nine o'clock on Thursday. And everybody can go, but Alan, how do you want to do the personnel? You want to do it in person or do you want to do it team? We're originally scheduled to do it after the meeting at the Brick Meeting House, but that's been canceled, so.
Well, the, the meeting is still going to take place, except it'll be virtual, correct?
Do you want to do it virtually or do you want to do it in person?
Well, we'll already be on a call to do that virtual. We could just continue what we need to do after.
I would, I would do it separately.
Well, I'm saying.
You have the potential of everybody in the world listening to a private conversation about personnel. I don't think that's a good idea.
It should be a separate meeting. I mean, it could be the same.
I can set that up at any time. All you had to do after that meeting is tell me you're going to meet. I can set it up right then.
That's, that's what I, that's what I meant, was after the budget meeting was over, then we would have our meeting. But we would do it, but we would do it virtual.
Right. Is that okay, Alan? Then I'll have Bill set it up, so whatever, whatever time the meeting is over, in five or 10 minutes, he can reset the meeting and we'll go do that. Okay?
Correct.
Alright, correct. Okay. Everybody have a good night. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you for.
Everybody.
Good night.
Alright, everybody.
Okay, good night.
Night.
Still recording? Meeting still being recorded according to that.
How do you get out of here?
How do you get out of here?